I'd like to call the order, the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, April 26, 2018. Rope call, please, Kathy.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Raff.
Here.
David Keen Abson, David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Gordon and Robert Comical both Abson.
Okay, item three is presentation of town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes from April 12, 2018.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Approve the minutes from April 12. Any questions from the public on that? Counsel, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Item five, receiver view correspondence and documents. I don't believe we have anything. Item six, ordinances to be considered or introduced.
We didn't meet, so we can pass those.
For both of those, right? Okay, the ordinance committee meeting was postponed for tonight, so...
It will be rescheduled. We'll reschedule later on the meeting, I guess.
The 10th.
The 10th.
Okay. Item seven, discussion items for managers clarification or direction or council discussions. Again, ordinance committee update, that's not going to be there. Request for story walk on Miles Lane trails. And I believe also you're talking waterfront?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Step right up.
Step right up? Okay, jump up here about.
Introduces.
I'm Doug Knoblauch.
I'm Bill Shaver.
If anybody doesn't know me, most, I think everybody knows. And maybe wish you didn't. God, this goes a lot faster than the library.
And we're from the Memorial Library, that's who we represent. And we adopted one of the Heart and Soul ideas, and one which was activities along the trails. And we wanted to put, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the story walk concept. I have some photos, some images of what it looks like. And these would go on garden stakes in their pages of children's books. And so kids can read them as they walk along the path. And the library would be responsible for installing and putting the books up and maintaining, making sure they stay in good condition, and taking them down in the winter.
What do you use for your determination for when books go up?
Well, there is a website that has suggestions that other communities have used. So we thought we'd peruse that and see what would be appropriate. There's, you know, the certain, like, they want books that have, sometimes have messages for children and some that you want to make sure that the images are on one page, they don't bleed over into another page for use of, putting them on the boards.
And what's the length of time you're thinking about having this up there?
Well, it would be summer, June through, I think, spring through fall.
And I'm going to ask, how many signs are you talking? I mean...
We were hoping for probably a dozen. And as a trial, I thought we could start at the gazebo, so we're not in the main section, and go from the gazebo to the, to the spray dog.
On the, on the side of where the...
On the north side of it, on the north side, back off of the, off the walkway. But so that people with children going down could read them to them as they go, as they go down that way. I'm voting for Dr. Seuss, you asked what books would be good to put down there. That was my first choice. I'm going to build these. These are not, they're going to be a little fancier than what you see there. Those of you who know me know that I don't put up junk. So I have visions of something white, painted white with each one. And we're going to put the stories on, laminated stories on with Velcro. So that when we're done, we can take the one story off and replace it with another one.
And how many boat, up to the trails you're talking, same now?
Well, we were going to, this is just going to be in one place. We talked about the trails and we, I want something with a little more visibility for one thing. The other is someplace where they might not all. If you get them way up in the woods, I have some concerns about whether they'll disappear or not. And having spent a lot of time down on the waterfront, we have pretty good record, I think, down there as far as there's very little, I've never, at the Marina, we've run into little but no problem as far as things disappearing and so forth, so...
And I got to ask this question to Sue or Jeff, maybe, you know, do we have any restrictions on postings like that on the waterfront?
No permits required.
The, the city of Brewer has done this. They had, they started on the waterfront, but they had a problem with the breeze. And it's, they put them on more substantial posts and they have them in their, along their parks.
I, I'd put them up and I'll go down and make sure they're all standing. We can walk. We also had, at last night at the fair up there, we had seven volunteers who were interested in helping with this, most of which we won't need, but we have people. So we'll, we'll put them up, we'll take care of them, and we'll take them down when it's over with.
How often would you be changing the stories?
We thought throughout the summer, maybe start at three, because it's not, it's not a cheap process. And this is all donated funds for this project. And you have to buy two books for each story. And we thought we'd start with, sit, you know, mixing up maybe every month throughout the summer and see how it goes.
Would you be receptive to a 30-day trial?
Sure.
Because, you know, if it's not well received, or we get a lot of complaints, or if there's issues with signs blowing over, or, or damage, or whatever like that. And we could, and that would give you an opportunity to do a couple of storybooks anyway, or...
Yeah, we want 30 days. We get one out and see if they, see what we hear back.
Or would it be better if we give you the whole summer like you want, but if we get complaints, shut you down?
That would be, whatever works for you. We want, I think, I don't see it being much of an issue.
It would be a substantial investment for them if it was just 30 days. Maybe 60 or 90 days to see and then...
You're talking June, July, and August, probably?
Yeah.
And we did, it was very well received. I talked with the seven volunteers that signed up last night. Everybody who came by said, "Oh, I love that idea. That's wonderful." Which is what it was. It seemed to be...
We even thought in the fall, when school went back, that if it was well received, we'd take our signs up.
Put them up there.
Work up, work something out with the Miles Lane and some of the teachers, maybe, to take the kids out and go for a walk up there with them.
And we were also thinking about below each page having like, hop like a frog to the next page. You know, there's some that do that. It's like an activity for the kids to do between the pages. And that, that I've seen in some, in some communities.
I make a motion to approve this for June, July, and August.
Second.
Okay, we have a, we actually act, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the request for a story walk on the waterfront by the Bucksport Library. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I think it's a great idea, go in the three months with the investment that's going to be made. And I think you'll get some people that ordinarily don't walk down that side of the walkway to now visit it. So definitely a favor.
I wanted to add one more thing. You just reminded me, Paul, with that too. Because I thought, rather than starting with Miles Lane, this is, I've been a big believer in our waterfront and Marina. And I thought, you know, people get off the boat and go for a walk. They may not have children. But it's another thing that if they see, isn't this cute, or whatever, what a nice town, you know. It's another, another little piece to, to selling our waterfront walkway and, and in the process of town. So a little more visibility, though.
And you said you'll be checking them routinely?
Yeah, yeah.
If there's damage to them?
I walk on the waterfront, and if they, if they're tipped or whatever, I'll take care of it. And if, Sue, that was, you brought up an interesting point, because I think I'm going to end up paying for the materials. But I figure it won't be a total waste if it's a failure, because a lot of candidates need signage for when they, when they run for reelection. So if this falls apart, come see me. I'll have some nice signs.
So, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item eight is a, agenda items. First one being resolve R. 2018-52 to approve the sale of surplus highway equipment to the highest bidder. Susan?
Yes, we had two vehicles, a 2003 F-550 and a 2004 Sterling that we put out with minimum bids. We received bids on both, and the request is to sell them to the highest bidder on each one.
We did have minimum bid on that?
Yes, we did.
This meets those?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve for the sale of surplus highway equipment. Do you have any, who the people are, what the numbers are?
Philip Smith was the high bidder on the 2003 F-550 for $3,665.85 and Patrick Karen on the 2004 Sterling cloud truck with attachments for $10,500.
And this will go into the highway?
Highway equipment reserve.
Okay, we have a motion and a seconded, right, to approve the sales. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Item B, resolve R. 2018-53 to approve the Route 46 maintenance contract for 2018, 2019. Susan?
Generally, in my trivia, is when you consider the renewal on the contract with Mr. McIntyre for maintenance of Route 46. I've had only good reports of, of the maintenance of that road. And this is a contract here for, you know, for, with an option for renewal. So I'm recommending that we renew with Mr. McIntyre for...
What's the percentage increase on that? Do we know?
This one? For, for between last year and this year, it's 5%.
5%.
But the, there was, there was that language in last year's contract that, that language is not in this year's contract.
The only thing I'd say, and I don't know if it means anything, but actually in the resolve itself, at the bottom, it talks about, it says Route 56.
46.
Right.
Sorry. Yes, I see.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve for approving the Route 46 maintenance contract for 2018, 2019. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Living out there, he certainly urges money this year. It was, it was a tough, tough winter. And the road was fairly well maintained, so...
Great. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Item 10, approval of quick claim deeds. We have two for the same gentleman. A quick claim deed for Jonathan Brown, MAP 7, Lot 25, and Jonathan Brown, MAP 7, Lot 26. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve both. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the quick claim deeds for Jonathan Brown. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes?
I have one more quick claim deed. 1426 Bucksmills Road, the high bidder on that property, which was one of the forebrothers, was unable to secure financing. And so it was offered to the next highest bidder. And that's Priscilla Stover and Mark Stover. And so they have the quick claim deed for that that I would like to have approved as well. You approved the sale of it, but it didn't go through to the gentleman that was the high bidder. This bid satisfies all tax, interest, and cost, and it was the next highest bidder. There were three other people on that one, too.
So we're approving quick claims. We can just make a motion to approve that one?
For 1426 Bucksmills Road, if you would the...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this quick claim deed to 46?
1426.
1426. Bucksmills Road?
Yep.
Anything, anything further from the public? The council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, town managers report.
I had the pleasure of participating in the Heart and Soul Summit and volunteer event on Wednesday, April 25 at the high school. It was a great event with 16 different local organizations represented with tables and information. A nice supper was prepared by Glenn Redmond at the school cafeteria for those who attended. I had the opportunity to talk with a number of people who were interested in what the town is doing and how the 82 ideas identified through Heart and Soul would be moved forward. A huge thank you to Nancy Minett and the core group of Heart and Soul volunteers who have worked so hard on this project for the past several years. We look forward to the implementation of many of the ideas that have emerged from this process into keeping a focus on the values that have been identified as being most important to the people of the community. And it's interesting that tonight, one of those ideas was presented to the council to be carried out by a local organization. So that was good. At a recent council meeting, a question was raised as to whether the town donating funds to Main Street Bucksport created an employee relationship that would cause a violation of the town charter for Councillor Eastman and his wife, who is the executive director of Main Street Bucksport. I referred the question to the Maine Municipal Association Legal Department, and their response was that donating to a 501(c)(3) does not make employees of that entity a town employee, so no, no conflict existed. They did say that Councillor Eastman could not vote on the funding for that group. The town dock floats and the Marina floats will be going in water on May 1, and the Marina opens on May 15. We want to wish the Chamber of Commerce the very best as they move into their new home right next door to the old Chamber location. If the FW has graciously, no, the Grange has, sorry, has graciously worked out an arrangement with the Chamber to allow them to use the building adjacent to 52 Main Street.
Marona Grange.
Yes. And if anyone has been out beyond the transfer station, you have the opportunity to see what the road edger that the town, we've been talking about, the kind of product that it turns out, the vendor that's selling their used equipment from the town of Cumberland brought it up so that the town could try it out. And the crew completed a half mile of road in less than two hours in a way that's uniform and compacted. And I think is a good indication of what a great job this could do on the more than 20 miles of road that we have that is in, that the edges need attention. It's my intent, unless the council objects, to put a resolve on the next council agenda to purchase this machine from the town of Cumberland so that we can move forward with this project. And finally, I want to recognize the first anniversary for the Lighthouse Art Studio. As of the 27th of April, they will have been in business in Bucksport for a year. And they'll have a celebration for it on Friday, April 27, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Item 12 is to set public hearing, hold public hearings, approve any licenses or permits. We do have one license to take up tonight. It's a special amusement permit for the House, we got to, this is actually a public hearing, to hold a public hearing or act on Dino Kismatakis doing business at Bucksport House of Pizza for a special amusement permit. Clear the public hearing open? Any comments from the public? We've cleared the public hearing and closed. How would the council like to proceed? We have a motion and a second to approve the special amusement permit for Dino Kismatakis doing business at the Bucksport House of Pizza. Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, we're going to go on to item 13, discussion items, not on the agenda for the council and the public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
I went by while they were, I happened to have gone by while they were out there doing that, that unit that they edged on the side of the road. Do we own a roller of any sort? They were using the dump trucks to drive back and forth, back and forth to Flack. And I don't, I would think that it'd be beneficial for them to use our roller. We have one for that.
I'm sure they probably will, if just, that was, they were just experimenting, I think. But we'll, we'll run it by them. Any other discussion items from the public? From the council?
What's the status, Susan, of the MRC? I see some towns are going to Perk. What are our options? It's disheartening that we're just throwing stuff in a landfill after we've worked hard.
It's more than disheartening. I would agree. Up until the 29th of, of March, the plan was to, if Flybright wasn't in operation on April 1, for waste to continue to go to Perk for communities in the Bangor region. For communities in the Waterville region to utilize Norwich Walk, which is the contracted disposal location for bypass or bridge waste from MRC communities. And two days before that was supposed to take effect, Norwich Walk Waste Management determined that, that all of that waste was contractually theirs, and they didn't, they wouldn't allow the MRC to dispose of it at Perk. Instead, what they did was, MRC and Casella got an agreement that waste from Biddeford and Saco that right now, before, had been going to Juniper Ridge would go to Norwich Walk. And an equivalent amount of tonnage from MRC communities in the Bangor region would go to Juniper Ridge. So that Casella got the same amount going into Juniper Ridge, and Waste Management got all that they were contracted with to go to Norwich Walk. The towns on the peninsula, Blue Hill, that five-town group decided that they weren't going to... There was an MRC committee meeting today, yesterday, which I did not attend. And the reason I did not attend is that the Juniper Ridge received a license extension for, to accept municipal solid waste on April 1. There's a 30-day appeal period for any entity to appeal that license. And if that appeal is, if an appeal is filed, the Board of Environmental Protection sits to decide that. I'm a member of that board. I couldn't wait until after April 30. I can't weigh in on that. But I will tell you that I reached out to the MRC and expressed my concern over the fact that we're not following the waste hierarchy in Maine. And I reached out today and asked what the consequences they were proposing for communities that had. Because if, in fact, they're proposing no consequences for the towns on the peninsula, then we'll be taking ours to Perk as well.
I was going to say, that's what our exposure, we're waiting to see?
I, I'm waiting to see what the legal consequences that are going to be.
Once we get that answer, can we find out as soon as possible?
Absolutely, because this, this is... There are a number of communities that are waiting for the answer to this. What are they proposing to do to communities who say, we're signed up and that's fine, and when you're in operation, we'll go there. But until then, we'll follow the hierarchy to the best of...
Okay, thank you.
Got a question. So where are we driving our rubbish to now?
Juniper Ridge. They're paying the, they're paying the difference in $110 an hour for every additional hour that it takes to deliver our trash over what it would have to take it to the hand.
Wasn't there a thing, too, on Norwich Walk that only their super trash trailers could go there? That they couldn't, wouldn't?
No, the Norwich Walk is where, we certainly wouldn't be going to Norwich Walk. The, the, the discussion at one point was some mid-area transfer station, if that had become necessary. But the agreement, the MRC had a contract with Perk to continue this that was, at the 11th hour, killed because Norwich Walk insisted on asserting their contract rights to that waste, which was the, the, Norwich Walk is who the MRC contracted with for bridge or bypass waste. Because at the time, the MRC applied for their original permit, DEP would not allow Juniper Ridge to be the site for bridge or bypass from this project. And I've also raised the question with DEP about why, if at that time it was disallowed, that it's, it's okay now for it to be used. And I, I don't know. I'm not sure if by the last day of the 30th of this month that there will be an appeal of this, and that will...
The hierarchy, you said, as far as the...
The hierarchy in Maine, which was established in 1984, reduce, reuse, recycle, incinerate landfill is the hierarchy of waste disposal. And it, that was always, it wasn't in statute, but it was in practice. And I think it was two or three years ago, it was put in statute that that is the hierarchy for, for how waste is supposed to be handled. Reduce, reuse, recycle, incinerate landfill, with landfill being the last area of resort. The, the waste that has been going from Southern Maine since Merck closed, when Merck closed, Biddeford Saco's waste went to Juniper Ridge under an agreement that allowed a few years for that to sort of go somewhere else. And they got to the end of the few years, and it's not going anywhere else. So they, this extension, even if the MRC wasn't going there, would still be landfilling the trash that used to go to Merck. Anyway, that's...
It's a mess.
It, it's a mess.
So we're, we're waiting for a decision?
I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for, in writing, what their, what the consequences to continuing to Perk are going to be from the MRC. Because there are currently five communities not complying. And if there's not, not going to be a consequence to those five communities, there can't be a consequence to anything else.
To the sex of the joints, I'm writing.
That's right.
Got a question up back?
When, when Perk was here talking to us at the time, when, when the decision was made to go with MRC, they, they said that if necessary, in the end, they would tip to onto the floor and they would completely 100% sort if they weren't able to use it to make power. They would sort it right there. When our stuff goes now to Juniper Ridge, is it just going there and just being buried?
It's buried. It's a landfill.
They're not sorting there at all?
They're not doing anything.
Yeah, that's not how I'm going to figure it out. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion items from the, from the council? Okay, let's go on to, let me see here, upcoming public hearings, the topics of committee assignments, scheduled and ordinance committee meeting?
It was said May 10th at 5.
May 10th at 5, yeah.
Okay, we'll go on to item 15, which is budget review. First one being general government. Then we'll go to sewer, then we'll go to revenues. Then we'll go to sewer, then we'll go to revenues.
General government has a number of categories. It's administration and planning and assessing and the municipal building, insurance and benefits, contingency, the public access channel, and economic development are all the items that comprise general government. The budget that's proposed in administration is very close to the prior years with the exception of salary adjustments. And under software support, there's a very large increase. And that increase is to allow for a contract with RSU 25 for IT services. Our IT individual has resigned from that position and is now a full-time fireman, EMT. Had that not occurred, there would have been a proposal in this budget to make what was a part-time position full-time because of the number and varied applications for computer use here and software, which is not just in our buildings, but it's also now in our police cars and ambulances and private trucks and the, but with Chris's, Chris Grindel's resignation in looking over how best to meet our needs, which range from programming down to the more mundane tasks, the idea of finding someone and hiring them full-time to do that is, in one person, is difficult. And it also would be a full-time salary and benefits. And that, and so I reached out to the school superintendent to talk to them about whether or not the district would have the ability to help us out here if we contracted with them. And after discussion, they needed some additional time, but not a whole additional person. So the proposal was that they're adding a staff person, a contract with us would allow us to have access for whatever we needed, whenever we needed it, for approximately $52,000 a year. And while that sounds like a big number, it's not as big a number by a lot of what it would have to be to hire IT expertise full-time and pay benefits associated with it.
So where does the 70 come from? I see a line that says computer.
The 70, well, prior, the other software support that's in that line item is the trio, is the licensing of.
So that's what that other contract is, the 14,000?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So that was one we had anyway?
We had that anyway. That's what it costs us to maintain software licensing for all the different versions of that trio program that we have. And the balance of that is the contract proposed with RSU 25.
So if I, we're getting a full-time person without full-time benefits?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, what we're also getting is the ability, there's Jim Morrell, who is the director, and then there's, there will be, there are several other people that work in IT with varying skill sets, all of which are important, but which are different. If we just, if we just need someone to come in and set up some computers, we, it doesn't take Jim to come down and do that. If we're having server issues, we can get him and, and have the type of expertise that we need when we need it as opposed, you know.
So we've contracted with a department, not just a person?
That's correct. We've got more than one person available to us to do this. And also, they're operating the PEG channel as part of this as well. And that is another item that we needed addressed as part of replacing Chris.
And, and, not for that, but we were fortunate to have a person like Chris doing what he was doing for nowhere near, for what that position normally costs of going around the world to try to find us.
Well, the, Chris had been with the town for a number of years in a number of different capacities and it's sort of grown into a bunch of things. But he was also a student and, and part-time. And there are, he did a great job. There are a number of things that need attention, not because he wouldn't do it, but there's, physically wasn't enough time in a part-time schedule to accommodate those things. And so he had set up a ticket system and the RSU is working its way through the, the things that are identified as needs. But as I said, other than that, the, the amounts in here relate to, primarily to increased wages. The, my salary shows a raise. My review is on tonight's thing, but it's not going to be heard tonight. That's a plugged-in number. I, you can make it whatever you want to, but the.
$25.
After, yeah, $25. After, your general treatment of, in administration is that after two years, there's a, there's, in addition to cost of living, there's a merit adjustment. And that is factored into that, because I have finished two years here. But that, again, that number can change. You have, you can take it back to whatever you want to. But the legal fees budget is raised some. We're still in the discussion regarding the walkway. In order to accommodate that, which I assume will end in this coming year, we have mediation on that mid-May of this year.
But when you look at the overall budget, other than that you take that $70,000, that were actually less than we were last year.
That's right.
We appropriated for this, so, yeah.
Now, are pay raises in this right?
Yes, yes, they are. Under office staff salary, the reason that that's lower than it was the prior year is that that's where Chris's Grindel's salary was located in that line item. And that got pulled out and put under software support as, as a contract as opposed to a payroll calculation, which also reduces our workers' comp liability from. Any other questions? The next one is municipal planning. And that, that department is code enforcement. And that is, includes code enforcement and the planning board, salaries and secretary and that, and that, their expenses, the CEO's expenses, and then office supplies, et cetera. The Hancock County Regional Planning Commission dues are in this, that we pay annually there in this budget. But the, the change is due to the cost of living adjustment.
What, what's the salary increase for the staff? Not, the union contract, what do they have?
1.5%.
1.5? So this is in line with that, okay. Want to make sure we're. And that was negotiated, right, that?
Yes.
The union one, okay.
This is the last year of a three-year contract. We'll be going, we'll be looking at another contract in, starting for 1920.
This position isn't union, right?
No.
Okay.
The only union contracts are.
Police and fire.
Police, fire, and public works. And however you traditionally treated your non-union people with the same cost of living raise.
Thanks.
Next one is the assessor. The assessor, again, we, two years ago, we approved the use of up to $40,000 over that two-year period to do a revaluation. That is pretty much complete and will be, will be in effect in this coming tax season. So that expenditure, which was out of fund balance, isn't reflected in this budget, but it, it ends because that is ending. The software support here is the licensing for the program, the assessing program that we use through Trio. Some of these that have specific licensing for a department is under those, those items. But again, this, the change in this budget is primarily the cost of living raise for the employee.
And again, when you look at the bottom line, most of these are less than, I mean, this is like a 1.3% and the cost of living is 1.5. So we're doing, we're trying to, you're trying to.
To keep the things that we know are, you know, the expenses don't change dramatically.
Well, I think that's one of the things that the mayor talked about the last time, was when we're looking at these budgets, not just to add this extra money in there to have as a buffer, but to try to get more realistic and try to make it where it's at. So if we can keep getting towards that, I think we're.
The municipal building is, includes the custodian salary, which has the cost of living in it, building supplies, building repairs and maintenance, heating fuel, electricity. And if you notice that electricity, it budgeted down, we've seen a dramatic decrease in the cost of electricity in this building since we converted to LED. So this, this budget reflects a $1,200 reduction in electricity for that, which is.
Good.
A good, a good start. We're, we're seeing a similar thing at Public Safety and we also budgeted less for the walkway lights for that. So that was the hope, was that we would do that.
Related to electricity, the, what's the status on the solar panels for the DPW?
They're supposed to be installed in June at the Public Works Garage. And we're still waiting for the last details to be finished at the sewer treatment facility to know what our final contingency number is, to look at the idea of solar there. Although in, when we get to the sewer budget, while other things have been more expensive than anticipated, the electricity, which was anticipated at coming in at close to $95,000, for the total is in, more in the $73,000 range, which is still a big number, but it's not as big a number as it, as it was otherwise. But the Public Works Garage solar installation is supposed to be June.
Thank you.
But again, this is, this budget is lower than last year. And it's lower than last year because of the reduction in electrical costs that this budget is. Okay, insurance and benefits is not lower than anything. The additional, we have additional in social security and group life and mainstay retirement and health insurance, and all of it is related to either policy changes or, but the biggest part of it is two additional full-time employees in fire. And some of the, these costs are offset, the benefit costs are offset by the grant monies that are coming in.
So any chance that, do you think the insurance industry has stabilized enough to this year take a look at that HRA stuff?
We're going into a contract year this year, and I think that, at least I'm working towards the fact that we've built enough of a level of trust that, that looking at that kind of an alternative with HRAs would be well-received by the unions. That's my, that's my goal.
Gotcha.
There, I, I don't think there's anything stable about the healthcare market at the moment, to tell you the truth.
Oh, that's why, yeah.
But I, but the.
That's the qualifying point, I guess.
But the fact of the matter is that the, using high deductible plans with an HRA is a very realistic way to do cost containment for the community to the best of your ability, but still provide good coverage to your employees that, that.
Equal to or better, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the goal. Our, our participation in LEADER and SAFER and all those things continue to get us rebates on our insurance. And we even, this year, received a refund check from our, our audit, our payroll audit through Main Municipal, because we had come in lower than estimate. And also because Rachel has, there's a provision in, in law that we're supposed to have statements or certifications from vendors who do work for us that they have the kind of insurance such workers' comp and liability when they, we contract with them. And if they don't, whatever we pay them becomes our payroll liability for those insurances. And we had, the town hadn't been doing that before. And so over the last couple of years, Rachel has worked with McIntyre and some of our bigger contracts so that those contracted amounts have come off from consideration from those payrolls. And that got us a refund this year for the first time. So it's a matter of just making sure that it doesn't cost the vendor anything to go through this process. It's just a process by which the state documents and confirms that they meet the criteria that's necessary. And we have a copy of that on hand so that when they come in to do our payroll audits that they can, they can see that we've done that. So that, small things, but, you know, getting back $3,500 on a payroll audit is not a bad Our contingency is $12,000. And contingency has been used from, over time, from everything, from the annual employee luncheon, generally comes out of contingency. If there's a particular event, something you want to sponsor, something that you want to contribute, contingency budget, if it doesn't have a previously budgeted line item, that ends up in that, in that line item. And the public access channel, the regular payroll is what we pay someone to video our meetings.
So that's not part of the contract?
No, the maintaining the equipment, doing those kind of things, but paying someone to sit there is. Program supplies and maintenance and repair. There's been a good deal of discussion over the poor quality of the video that people get when they're watching the cable channel. People who watch us on video streaming see a better product than people watching us on cable where we jump and we do. Part of that is due to the equipment related to the spectrum side of it. And part of it is due to where that channel sits on Spectrum's cable network. We're nowhere near Channel 3. We're nowhere near Channel 3, but, you know, it's-
Out there.
It's out there. But we've been waiting for years for Spectrum to finalize a contract, another contract to replace the one that you have that expired back when it was Frontier Vision. I don't know how many entities ago that was, but it did. And so, that discussion remains ongoing. At the time that it's finally settled, there's supposed to be a significant cash payment to the town and the first time that happened, you used it to buy the equipment that you're using now primarily. There's a few improvements, but not a lot, but it may come to the point where we use some of the public access channel reserve money that we have to replace some of this equipment so that the, we, we talked about moving this year to not only doing planning board meetings and council meetings, but adding committee meetings to being broadcast as well. And if we're going to do that, I think we may have to also look at upgrading our equipment in order to make the viewing experience for the public not as frustrating for those who are watching on cable channel.
Can we figure out what the cost of that's going to be because that is an absolute, it's frustrating to folks, it really is.
Jim Morrell has some ideas for how we can do that. He's, he's in the back room as we speak, but he's, also has been looking over our equipment as to how we could improve what we're doing, so.
And the, and the plan is to go forward with committee and planning board and those two?
Yes.
Okay.
Committees, planning board and-
Council, yeah.
Yeah. And the last one is economic development, which is Rich's payroll, there's dues, travel, training. The, he added an advertising line item this year that wasn't there in the past that is, accounts for the majority of the change, but a large part of this, actually $31,000 and change, I believe, comes, of this is offset by funds that you take from your TIF fund that you have, that you still have money in from the years from the mail.
And part of Rich's wages were also because he added the waterfront, right? That was, that was the added extra expense on that.
That is correct. Next one is the sewer. And we now have one year under our belt in operating a secondary treatment facility. When we did last year's budget, we didn't know, we didn't have anything other than our engineers' estimates on what the operational costs would be. We knew that we had contracted with Main Water, we knew that number and we knew what our own employee cost us, but some of the other chemicals, supplies, electricity, all of those items were estimates that we worked from. And the, the proposed budget is, if you go down, there are obviously salaries over time, operators' expense. The benefits for sewer are all in the sewer budget as opposed to our other general fund budget where all of the insurances and benefits are all in general government, even though they're, they support all the departments. But sewer, because all of the costs of sewer are paid by sewer users, are centered in this one account and that's why these, the benefits are all listed in one place.
What is the contingency?
The contingency is two pieces in that. And when you receive the rural development funding, one of the components of receiving that funding promises that annually the town will set aside $61,500 in a dedicated reserve that the purpose of, during the life of this project, the purpose of which is to accumulate funding towards the need for eventual replacement. But that, so of that 71,145, 61,5 is that dedicated reserve required by rural development for the town to set aside annually and put in an account that's reserved for eventual replacement of this work, this plant after the 28 years of service that you have. And the remainder of the contingency is, is our funds that are used for unanticipated expenses. It's a, that's what they've used that for over time. The debt and interest is identical to what it is, what it is before. The 28-year payment is the same every single year and we have that payment and then you have the payment on the swirl concentrator down here in interest. $15,412.50 annually of the interest on the swirl concentrator is paid from the general fund. You raise that to contribute to that debt you have ever since you put it in. That was something that you apparently determined to do when you-
What's the-
Did that-
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I was just, the next biggest number is the contracted services. What is?
Contracted services, $210,000 of that is Main Water for Dave Micho and the other full-time person and administrative permit filing and all those kind of things. They take care of all of that, but it's the, the license necessary to operate the plant. Both Dave and Harold have the level of license required to be, to operate the secondary treatment facility. When we did, added, when we redid the contract a year ago, they added a full-time person. It was known when you went to secondary treatment that you were going to have to add, there was going to need to be another person and we talked about whether or not we should go hire somebody on our own and have another full-time employee for the town or wrap it into the contract with Main Water that includes administration and permit filing and all of the administrative duties at that time. And for much the same reason that doing an IT contract made sense, a contract that takes that amount of payroll and benefit expense out of the town's responsibility line and turns it into a contract is savings to, even though it's a big number. Electricity costs, as you see, it was estimated at 95, it's going to come in at less than that, I budgeted 78,800. That's more than just the treatment plant, that's the swirl concentrator, that's all the pump stations and that is the, the treatment facility as well. The other thing that's a significantly larger cost is water and it's because the, part of the cooling at the treatment plant is water and it's, when we had primary treatment, that wasn't necessary to that degree. It is in this new facility and that was not a line item that was identified when we were given the new budget was going to be significantly more, but it is. The other thing that's up significantly is treatment plant chemicals and in particular, they're having to treat the digesters, digesters with a soda ash to keep the pH where it needs to be for all the testing and it's a big expense and they-
But this should also give us a better idea now we do it for a year.
This is what it's costing us too.
This will be the number kind of going forward, yeah.
This is not a, this is not a-
Swag.
Year. This is, we know what it's cost us to do these things and, and in looking at what we can do, the office supplies item, we didn't decide to go buy more paper and pencil. Main Water now charges us for the readings for the sewer. But they started that this last year and that it's $1,702 and change a quarter to get the readings so that we can build for sewer. And that is under office supplies because I don't have another line item to put it, but I can't build for sewer without water readings because I don't have a way to know and so they instituted a charge for providing those readings and that's what that cost us.
I would think that would be part of contracted stuff that they're doing anyway, but.
Do they, do they bear with me because I'm on a well and septic, but do the meters, do they have to go read every meter or are they on smart meters? Just curious.
For the, for sewer?
Yeah, for, for water and-
For water, yeah, for the water meters. I think that they have, they don't go to every, I think some are smart meters, I don't think they all are, but I think some are smart meters because in December they had problems getting readings from some of them and so in this quarter, we've had some people who had an estimated reading last quarter and it was higher. In this quarter their use was like two and so in looking at their use, it, it was because it was an estimate and they ended up being charged for over the minimum when they wouldn't, shouldn't have been based on what their actual reading was in this quarter. So we've, I've made adjustments to those bills, back to the minimum for those who have, have found themselves with an over the minimum bill and then this little tiny one in the next.
So not too, just a couple more, bear with me. So a couple of weeks ago, we signed off on the sewer rates, correct? So where will the additional $15,000 for the budget come from?
The, the estimated revenue was higher than-
Okay, gotcha. And then when this contingency from the work that was done for the new section that was put in and we're looking to see what that comes about, whether or not we should go with solar panels, but that will not have an impact, the debt and interest remain the same over the entire period.
That's correct.
And so anything that comes back off contingency will not impact that.
You can't, contingency is grant money. You spent your own money, you spent grant money and then the last thing to get expended in a sewer treatment plant project is grant funding and there's no bonus for not spending it. You can't use it to pay down debt, you can't use it for anything other than expenses related to your facility. If you wanted to put in solar or fix a line behind the Panaford or do, you could do those things, you can't put it against your outstanding debt, so. So there's no, there's no incentive to give it back. The other, the sledge disposal costs have increased. The, the very septic, which is not very septic anymore, but the new owners, the rates have gone up on sledge disposal. That was one of the, beyond our control kind of things as well. Pads and repairs is down slightly. I, there's a minor adjustment, but it is something. And then electricity is coming in at less than anticipated, so that is-
When it's all said and done because of the new facility and the new technology and so forth, can any of that, if we have contingency money left over, can that go into a, a future MRO fund?
No.
No? I'm trying here, I'm trying.
I know. I asked all these questions and the answer is no. You've got to spend it and that's why trying to find a way to spend it that can save us money in the long term is what I think-
But your motto is getting beyond no. Sorry.
Well, so beyond no is a way, if we have to spend it, to spend it to save money in the long run. And if you can't just pop it against something and you can reduce electricity by X thousand dollars a year, then, you know, I think that's a better use for it than building something else that we've got to take care of. Okay, that's sewer. And then we have revenues. So excise tax is holding pretty steady at around $800,000. We may have a little more, I'm not comfortable in raising it. The legislature on an annual basis tries to take a run at excise tax and every time they do, it could have a big impact on us. I'm hoping not, but it could. Vote excise tax is what we receive from people who register their vote to pay excise tax. And the auto registration fees are the three or four dollars per vehicle registration that we take in across the counter for vehicles that are registered here in Bucksport. Interest on taxes is exactly that, people who pay their taxes late, that, that's an appropriation from, from those funds. Interest on investment, it had been, you had been, or the town had been using about $44,000 of interest earned on its investments, not its reserves, but its general fund investments. But your, your interest accrual on an annual basis for those is around $120,000. And so I'm budgeting half of it as a, as a use of interest with the other half staying with the investment so that your principal is not touched, but you're using a little bit more of your interest to offset the cost of your, your expenses. And tax lien costs are costs that the town expends to put on tax liens, but when people pay them, we get the money back at the time they pay them. So they're budgeted both as an expense in sewer or taxes, whichever one, and then as income back in, for, in this particular budget, this is all general fund. The sewer revenues include a lien cost component as well. Town clerk revenues are revenues that Kathy takes in by issuing license and birth and death and all the other different, and various things that she issues. The TIF revenues is, are, that $75,000 are funds out of the existing TIF account and you can see how they're broken down. Economic development, I can't just be able to see that. Marketing, the Chambers fee that they requested for the festival, the, the town, the amortization of the note for Mr. Chambers has at the hotel, that's a piece that comes out of that. And then I included $5,000 as an increase for transportation funding for this year to look at some changes in bus and taxi things.
Was that Chambers Fest supposed to be 15,000? Did they request 15? Is this the request that the Chamber made for the Bay Festival?
Yes. It is 15,000. I, 13 is what I've got coming in, I guess, not 15. I didn't take more than, 75,000 was the maximum I wanted to take out of TIF in this year so that we have a number of years left of being able to appropriate from it unless or until another TIF comes along and I'm not in, if one does, yes, and if one doesn't, I don't want to use it all at once. The appropriation from surplus last year was 350 and this year I'm suggesting use That's out of that little over $6 million that you have in fund balance. Miscellaneous income is some, are things that come in that I don't have another place to put. The homestead reimbursement is the amount of money that the state sends us back for The homestead reimbursement is the amount of money that the state sends us back for their share of the fact that we do property tax reduction for homestead exemptions. Betty is the business equipment tax exemption reimbursement that comes from the state of Maine back to the towns for lost value for personal property that has been the state has removed the tax liability but still reimburses to the community. And that's lower than it used to be. It's it's a declining percentage, but it's that's what we anticipate for this year. Fee in lieu of taxes are paid by entities that are are they're not required to be they don't have to pay property taxes, but they pay us fee in lieu. And right now, the one who is it this at the end of our? It's a tax exempt organization that pays the town a fee in lieu of the fact that they're this is embarrassing. I can't think of the.
We know it's there. We trust you.
Oh, it's it's I'll remember it before we get to the end of this thing. Anyway, that's the amount that they pay us instead of property taxes because they that was the agreement at the time they were. Copier fees, obviously. School designated surplus. Okay, school designated surplus is 118 it's 268, 232. 118, 232 of that is money that you have left at the end of the current year's budget because the school charged us less than they told us the appropriation was going to be when we budgeted last year. They didn't change their number till after July 1, and your budget was already adopted. So there's 118, 232 left. I'm suggesting that you take another 250,000 out of school designated surplus. That's the monies that were a portion to Bucksport at the time the RSU was formed. You have a little over $560,000 in that account, and this year's estimated increase for the school is approximately $300,000. And this would mitigate all but a smaller amount of that. And with anticipated increased valuation for next year, it can level out without the use of this in another year, but it keeps the thing from doing a bump in this in this year. Mr. Boothby will Superintendent Boothby will be here at the meeting on May 10 to address you about education, and he may have a a better number. The the number 300,000 is less than I thought it was going to be, but it's still a significant increase. Planning board fees are the fees that people pay to have their applications processed. Code enforcement, same thing. Plumbing permits. General assistance, the town receives 70% reimbursement for anything it spends on general assistance up to a certain amount. We appropriate 8,000. We don't spend 8,000, but if we did, we'd get this approximately this amount of money back. Whatever we spend, we get a reimbursement of 70% of that. Tree growth is is funds that are given to the town, reimbursed to the town for lost valuation because property that's in tree growth is taxed at a much lower rate than otherwise. And main revenue sharing is the 2% of state tax that is distributed to municipalities according to a formula. Again, that's much smaller than the number used to be used to be 5%, but that's been changed. And veterans reimbursement are funds that the state reimburses to the town for lost valuation, lost taxation from exemptions given to veterans. Fire protection subsidies are what we receive from Verona for providing fire services. Ambulance user fees at 480, I've increased that $48,000 to accommodate a year of adding transfers into our ambulance retinue of services available with now with two people on per shift and that using the third ambulance, we'll be able to do transfers, which up to now we haven't been able to do and are which are which are a source of income for the community that wouldn't have an additional expense. We're already provide already paying the expense. It'll give us an opportunity to have additional income. The FEMA grant subsidy for for this year is $93,000. Police revenues at 34,000 is the percentage of the school resource officer that the school reimburses to the community. Animal control fees are fees paid to Bucksport by other communities who also use our animal control, our animal shelter. The dispatch subsidy is eliminated because Orland won't be participating. Highway revenues are road opening permits and the highway block grant that we receive annually from the state of Maine. Local road assistance is what it's called, and there's a that's what we'll be receiving this year. Solid waste subsidies are not there because, again, Orland is not participating in our transport station as of July 1. Recycling revenues are items beyond metal in some of those, beyond the ones that go in zero sort that we get money back for. There's some income for them. Solid waste fees are the demolition and those kind of fees that we get. We're not we're still not charging for solid waste disposal. We're charging ore recycling. We charge for demo and those associate those other items beyond trash, but that that isn't. MRC revenues are are gone as of April 1 of this year. The the town will not be receiving a rebate back to get the tipping fee to any particular number that they did for the past 20-plus years that that ended when the contracts ended with PERC and AMERA, et cetera. Spotford funds are it's a $4,500 amount that we take annually from that to use as income. Recreation revenues are the diversion grant and RSU reimbursement for the employee who was the assistant to the recreation director at the time we went to the Y for rec services. We had committed to not disenfranchise anyone, and so we were able to contract with RSU 25 for her services as a social worker when she's not doing the diversion program for that. Snowmobile revenues are fees we get for registering people's snowmobile, and cable TV revenues are are the 5% of the cable cable subscriber spectrum cable subscribers in Bucksport have a 5% fee on their cable bill, not their internet, but cable TV services, and that 5% is sent to the community, and that this is revenue from that. And then docking and mooring fees, those are in the general fund budget for the town dock, and those are generally what we receive from cruise ship tech fees. Those aren't budgeting into the marina, and that that is $3,232,748, and that's those are the revenues available to offset taxation in the whole budget.
Very good. Any questions?
At the next meeting, we'll have the budget as a whole with together, and the next meeting is the one where you'll talk about out of that how what you want to do for funding on the social and community agencies. We generally go through that so that we finalize what that looks like, but those decisions for what's going to be moved forward are made at at the next meeting, too. Then at the second meeting in May, you would put it up for public hearing in June.
So is there one next Thursday at 6:00 that's going to?
No, there's not one on the 3rd. The next meeting of council.
On the 10th.
Is the 10th.
Okay.
Tonight finishes all the.
All the budget.
Budget items. And your next regular council meeting is where you go over the whole I I give you a clean slate with all the numbers and show what the where we end up at the bottom, and you go through in particular, I mean, you can go through anything you want to, but in particular, you've always addressed on that night the level of funding that you want me to include in a final budget to go up for public hearing for social service agencies and community agencies.
Yeah, I've been here for one of those yet because I've always been gone on the ship, so this was all new to me.
So that would be on the 10th.
Good. Thanks.
All right. Item 16 is executive session. We're going to postpone that until we get the full council here, and that'll be.
Are we going to postpone that till the full council is here?
I thought we were just going to the 10th.
The 10th?
The next council meeting.
The next council meeting. Thank you. I I just wanted to because I'm not sure that's not going to the full council's not going to be here till I don't think until the last.
Right, right. Yeah, we just go into the 10th. Okay. All right, we're going to item 17.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor. Opposed, motion passes. It's all your fault if you hadn't asked me any questions.
I don't know. Sorry. That's not my idea. Number one.
Do I? I wonder, do I?